All right, now, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our first actual in-person council meeting in five months. First off, any disclosures of interest? Seeing none, just before we get into the meat of our meeting, I have a few things to talk about. It's been a busy day in West Niagara. Niagara Regional Transit On Demand was launched today and managed to call the transit company, and it worked out really well. It was nice to see them there. The vans look really, really good. I guess they're Toyota Siennas. They look really good, really sharp, and we really hope that this brings us a transit plan that's both affordable and effective, and really at $3 anywhere in the town of Grimsby and then $6 to connect to the towns that have an actual transit system, a full-time transit bus system. It's very affordable, and because it's virtually door-to-door, it is good for everyone. And also today, the AMO conference is running virtually this Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday as well, and Premier Ford in his opening address mentioned West Lincoln Memorial Hospital and the planned build of it. And we also had a Zoom meeting today with Minister Elliott. It was a meeting that went well with Mayor Easton, Mayor Balsma, MPP Sam Oosterhoff, and it went really well, and Minister Elliott commended us and said she can hardly wait to get the shovel in the ground. So that was really good news, and we're really, everyone's working together in West Niagara, and it's just really a great day. And last but not least, on August 3, 2020, Counselor Sharp and Julie had a baby girl, Stacy Mae Sharp. So congratulations, Counselor Sharp and Julie. And I'll end with that on the best note. So first up, we have adoption of previous counsel in it. Need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Frake, Counselor Dunstall. Moved by Counselor Frake, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that the minutes from the July 20, 2020 council meeting be approved. All in favor?
Yes.
And that's carried unanimously? Next, we have report Corp. 20-05, joining the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities. Need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, seconded by Counselor Vardy. Moved by Counselor Vardy, seconded by, or sorry, discussion on the, before I read the resolution, Counselor Bothwell?
I noticed in the agreement that we'll be signing on this that there, it's led by the region and that the municipalities will be assisting with joint plan of action. So I just wondered, maybe our CAO Schlang can answer this, is will Grimsby have representation as we do this joint plan of action? And how will we be accountable as a municipality for promoting anti-racism, anti-discrimination initiatives that, as the region is leading it, how as a municipality will we be accountable? And will we have some representation from council or staff on that? Thank you.
So thank you through you, Mayor, to Counselor Bothwell. Yes, so the representation will be either, you know, myself, the CAOs are getting together with the staff that they proposed. And again, what we'll try and do, and much how we do, is try and work together, whether that would be Niagara West working together with the region, but definitely we would be accountable for, make it look like a Grimsby representation. But leveraging the regional resources and regional staff will certainly go a long way.
Thank you, CAO Schlang. Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll read the resolution. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, seconded by Counselor Vardy. Resolve that report Corp. 20-05 regarding joining in the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities dated July 20, 2020 be received, and the Grimsby Council endures the request from Niagara Region to join the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities and pass the motion proposed in Appendix A. And further, that Mayor Jordan be directed to sign the Joint Regional Declaration to join the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities attached in Appendix B of this report. All in favor?
Yes.
And that's passed unanimously? Up next, we have report FIN 20-11, 2019 General Statement of Operations. Stephen's going to speak on that. Welcome, Stephen.
Good evening, council. So I'm just going to run through our 2019 General Operation of, General Statement of Operations. So I just did a little, quick little presentation, just to give you a gist of how we performed in 2019. So the surplus was fairly large in 2019, and I want to give council an idea as to why that was the case. So in 2019, we had a new council, we had a new CAO, and we had strategic council priorities that were established. So with all the uncertainty and it being such a huge transition year, staff were very mindful of spending during 2019. So we were very cautious of how we spent money as we are waiting for council's direction and direction from our new CAO. So in 2019, the overall budget surplus of just over $1 million, and that is net of the Building Department surplus of $248,000, the Public Works, sorry, yeah, Public Works of $172, Art Gallery $36,000, the museum $10,000, and the library $7,700. So surpluses in some of the departments, corporate revenue, IT, fire, Parks and Recreation, and finance, and then there were deficits in planning, transportation services, and So the total surplus, $1,686, less total deficits of about $590,000, coming to our net surplus of $1,096,000. So that $1,096, we're recommending that those funds be transferred to reserves, and I've listed, made a list there of the reserves where we think those money should be allocated to. For the most part, all budget, all departmental surpluses would go into their respective capital reserves, and we also created a COVID contingency, which we're going to put into the Budget Contingency Reserve, and that's to avert any potential impacts from this year and in 2021 if the funds are needed. As you're aware of as well, we just received from the province a great amount, a wonderful amount, of about $682,000 to also help with COVID operating costs. So I, you know, I, it really helps and helps me to sleep a little bit better at night, knowing that these extra, these additional funds are here. So that's basically the gist of the operating, the operating fund. If there's any questions about anything in particular, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Stephen. Counselor Frake, I saw your hand up.
Stephen, thanks for your presentation. It's music to my ears, and I'm sure for the rest of council, that we've got $1 million in surplus. I have a couple of questions around that, though. Are any of the surpluses related to anything that we were able to do better as a result of COVID, because we had less cost in certain areas? That's one question.
Anything we were able to do during COVID, which probably lessened the costs, like running the building, for example?
So are there any cost savings in there that represent that?
That, this is specifically for 2019? Yeah.
Is, because we had $1 million in surplus, and we're kind of late finding that out, if we had known we had that $1 million surplus before we did our budgets, could we have lessened the budget for 2020?
Potentially, you could have, but it, the thing about the budget surplus is that it's a one-time surplus. The items that we brought into the budget in 2020 would be ongoing costs. So the idea was to build them into the levy and to increase the levy on a permanent basis.
$1 million could have been factored into our budgeting for 2020.
Absolutely.
At the time, if we weren't late coming through with the numbers for 2019.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any lesson we can have learned from this? I mean, could we, could we have done something better to have budgeted better? Because $1 million is a big number, and it's a big number to the taxpayer. So is there something we could have done better? I mean, is there some lessons we could have learned from this? I don't want to point fingers at anybody, because we, you know, having a $1 million surplus is great, but on the other hand, we had to stick the taxpayer with some, with some taxes as a result of it. So is there anything we could have learned from this that we can do different going, going forward?
Yeah, but it, in terms of the surplus, it wasn't just lower expenses, but also in some cases, much higher revenues, which, which added to the surplus. And in terms of expenses, we, yes, we were very, like I said, we were very mindful of how much we were spending in 2019. Like I said, with the new council awaiting the strategic priorities and with a, with a new CAO, staff were very cautious and very careful about how they spent money until we, until council, until we went through the strategic priority setting process and to see where, where council wanted to spend money. But yes, are there lessons? Absolutely. You know, there's, there was a lot of legal cost, too. I mean, that was a huge expense, way over budget, and that was something that we got used to with council as well. Council took a more firm approach in dealing with, with a number of planning files.
We did incur.
Yeah, so they were, but they were over budget.
This $1 million surplus is something we didn't spend.
So again, higher revenue. Higher revenues and in some cases, lower expenses, because, again, we were very mindful of spending during the year.
How much more revenue did we have than we forecasted? I'm trying to find it here. I don't think it's in here, is it?
Yeah, I, let's see here.
The, the cost, but I don't see the revenue.
Yeah.
So how much, how much of that $1 million would be, could we factor revenue into? Just roughly.
It was about $100,000. And then expenditures were about $900,000 under.
Affected all that much?
Um, the revenues.
I'm not putting you on the spot here, I'm just, just a question.
There were additional revenues.
Okay, all right. So I think, what I'm, what I'm going to say is that going forward, we really have to be a little more vigilant in, in closing our books earlier, so that we can look at the budgets in the current year a little more intelligently, a little more effectively, so that we can take this kind of number out of our taxpayers' expenses. So anyway, thank you, Stephen.
And I, I believe we're in a. I believe in, we're in a better position in terms of a more timely report with some restructuring in the Finance Department, so I think that'll definitely help going forward.
To, to factor that into our tax, property tax budget for next year? I mean, to, can we put that back, give that back to the, to our taxpayers somehow?
Certainly, you could.
Do a surplus fund or?
Yeah.
A reserve, whatever, but I mean, can we not, next year, look at putting this back into, into the tax bucket, so we can take it back out of our, take it away from our taxpayers?
Yeah, I mean, council, if they choose to, yes. I mean, you potentially could. The money will go into reserves, and council can use it. It's not something I'd recommend, but because you've built up the levy now, I think the idea would be to keep the levy, because it doesn't hurt you to move forward with the levy at the current level, at the current level it's at.
Reserves are surplus, so why should we do that? Why don't we just take it and put it forward into next year's budget?
Again, yes, potentially, yes, you could. Yeah. Again, it's not something I'd recommend, but yeah.
Just something for everyone to think about?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
CAO?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the one thing on lessons learned, maybe there's a possibility in 2023 with the new council to set the priorities earlier. You know, we didn't set the priorities of council till December of 2019, and what a best practice is you try and do that in the first quarter of a new council, and then you get that direction from council to spend. We only had about a $60,000 reserve going into 2019, so previous councils had eaten up some of the reserves, so Stephen and I will strongly recommend that. It's still a council decision to keep those reserves for the future, future decades for Grimsby.
Thank you, CAO. Counselor Dunstall was up, then Counselor Vardy, then Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Dunstall.
I'll, I'll be quick. Thank you, Mayor. Could, could you put that last screen, just a couple of quick questions on? Oh, sorry. Lean back. Please do not touch microphone. Read the sign. Yeah, yeah, don't touch, don't raise it or lower it, just leave it alone, John. Yeah, sorry, do you want me to sanitize it now? Sorry. We got to get used to this again. I was just looking at some of the items, the Parks and Rec capital projects, it was over, did we do the ice rink in 2019, the redoing of the One Pad, or was that in 2000? It was 2019, and we were still over budget, eh? Well, that's good.
That, that was a capital, capital item, it wasn't operating. So that, this is specifically.
Capital of projects, right up there, second line.
Yeah, well, we're recommending that the surplus go into the capital projects, public, Parks and Recreation.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's going into, yes, okay. Okay, so that's where it's going. So that's a good thing, because that was a huge expense, was it not?
Yeah, it was about $800,000, and it was funded exclusively from the gas tax revenues.
Ah, that's where it went. Okay, that's good to know, because that was, so that was covered, and that didn't come out of the levy. Wow, that's great, that's good news, too. And then I just noticed down there with the pump house, what, we're putting money into the reserve for the pump house? What's a pump house need money for? I'm just wondering, it's just a, a building that we rent out to the public to use, and of course, we're not renting it out right now, because nobody can use it. But I'm just curious, why $8,000 is going in there?
Yeah, the pump, every facility pretty much has a, has a maintenance reserve, so we put monies in, in there to, like, we, we replaced the roof a few years ago. So we, we build up monies in, into those reserves, so we can provide maintenance for those structures. Yeah.
Can I hit it? No, no, sorry. Thank you. No, that was it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dunstall. Counselor Vardy?
All right, thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding of the municipal act is we're not supposed to collect more tax than what we expect to use. And if we do, I mean, that money, to my mind, should defer what taxpayers are having to pay. So basically, we overcharge the taxpayer in a certain sense, ultimately about 10%, right? A million dollars, it's roughly $100,000, right?
I would disagree with overcharge, but yes, we.
More than, than, than what was needed, and we're only supposed to collect what we believe is needed. And I, I think the sort of lesson learned here is that we should have not done our 2020, well, we should have closed off our 2019 actuals before doing our 2020 budget, so that if we had a surplus, that gets factored into our, our 2020 budget and offsets the tax increase that the taxpayers ultimately paid. So that's a concern for me, to have this go into surplus at a time when, one, we need money for our hospital, although we have budgeted money for the hospital, but, you know, we could always use more, so that's, that's one thing, but we have built it into the budget. And also because there may be some shortfall that the government hasn't picked up with respect to COVID. So I am quite reticent to be putting money into reserves, when I know that, one, in a certain way, we shouldn't have collected in the first place, and two, we really need to be cognizant of the taxpayer at this, at this point. The other thing that concerns me is that we increased our base budget for 2020 on 2019, and that budget was a million over budget. So basically, we've based our 2020 budget on an inflated figure, not intentionally, but that's the result of, of what's happened. So I, I guess what I want to say for 2021, we really need to close off our books for 2020, have the actuals, and make that a priority, so that when we're doing our 2021 budget, we, we know what we've spent. And then we also know that now that we have this million dollars, we should be thinking about those two principal offsets, hospital and COVID. So that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vardy. Counselor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I echo Counselor Vardy's well-worded speech. Question for Stephen. If we pass this recommendation this evening to put the surplus, 1 million, .1.1 million into reserves, when we get to the next 2021 budget, it's not as easy as saying, oh, you know, all those little pots of money we threw into reserves, well, let's use that to reduce the, the tax levy impact. How do we do that now, so that those monies don't end up in reserve, where we have to then cherry pick them back out when it comes to wanting to use the 1.1 million to, potentially to reduce any COVID impact, or hospital impact, or tax levy impact in the 2021 budget? That's the first question.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing we can do right now until we know exactly what, you know, the budget is going to be. You know, we have a list of, you know, here, we know exactly what went where, so if it's council's decision to use some of these monies to offset the 2021 budget, we know exactly where the money went.
So we'll be putting it in reserves then, right?
That's right.
So, and what, what ends up happening is it's getting intermingled with the rest of the reserves, and some of these departments have very, very healthy reserves right now. Public Works, Parks and Rec, they have, they have larger reserves, is what I mean, so those amounts get sucked up into the whole reserve pot?
We, we, we know exactly how much money is in each reserve, like, we have a record, so we, we would know exactly. And I wouldn't actually say that Parks and Rec and Public Works have very healthy reserves. There's enough money in those reserves, basically, to accomplish our capital projects from year to year.
So there's no need to do a motion today to protect those funds, that if we want to draw them out again, we should have that opportunity to do that at budget time? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Second question is the cemetery deficit of 26,000, did that take into account the investment income that was not in the audit and not in the reported amount?
That's correct, yes, it did.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Sharp, I see you have your hand up.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. Just a quick one, but not to take away from what some of my colleagues have said, because it's valid, but these reserves that we put in here, when it comes to our next budget, an item might come, like, say, new windows at the pump house, and that would be an item that we would add to the budget. And then instead of adding that to the budget, like, as a new item, it may come from that pump house reserve, which we just put $8,000 to, and that might, so when we say, like, we don't have that to offset our next budget, there's other items, like, you know, the Southwood Park, and when, so something comes up, like, we need new light at the Southwood Park, and it's going to cost us X amount, and that would be a budget item, but now we have a little, little sock that we put in under our bed with some money in it, and that, it's like, oh, hey, so now we don't have to add, so it's like, we are preemptively. And then if there becomes some, like, big item, oh my gosh, there's $500,000 for something, then we could, if we had to, go back, there's a record of this, we keep records, and, and we could say, okay, we'll take $8,000 here, $6,000 there, $14,000 here, $200,000 there, and put it all together, and wow, we've got $500,000. But that bridge we can cross if we come to it, and we hope that we don't have a major item to add like that. But I think that this is the most responsible way to manage the savings, and in my personal life, in my personal budget, if I had some savings like this, I wouldn't say, go and spend it right away on a new car, or I would say, you know what, I have, I just had a daughter, like, last week, and I'd say, you know, why don't we hang on to it in case we need this or that, right? And I'd put it in an account, and I'd earmark it for a rainy day, and this is essentially a good way to, to manage a rainy day fund, and this, I think, will, some of what you guys said is valid, and, and this way of making reserves will help us to do, to accomplish those things that you, that you want and we want. So I think that I should support this, and it's a good plan.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. Counselor Cadwell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and thank you, Stephen, for the report, and I know the $1 million, it's, it's a good surplus to have, and just thinking back on how things have been going, and how things have been handled and done over in the past, I always think of Public Works. We have great staff that is really, when they put their budgets together and they put their tenders together, sometimes tenders do come in a lot lower than what we budget for, and that, that's just being the, maybe the economy of the construction, you know, industry at that time. So these are great, that we do get, these are good news stories, they really are. I know some councils mentioned if you had the actuals before, and I've always said that, too, but it's, as you mentioned, hopefully, in moving forward, we'll get a closer timeframe to actuals, because I've talked to councils and other municipalities, and they look at last year's actuals when they do their budgets, because sometimes their budgets are done, you know, before the new year, which is a real, it's a real strong push for that. But, yeah, I just want to say, and I've got our town reserve and balance fund, my bible, as I always get from you, Stephen, and I'll tell you, we're, our reserves are very low. They're, they're scary low, and because I can, I'm reflecting now back to December 31, which you've recorded in here, and it's, it's not a real pretty situation here, but to be able to put some, some surplus money back in the reserves will definitely help us in the future, so thank you very much for the report.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say congratulations on the surplus, it's great. But I have a bunch of, you know, I'm kind of in between all the councils But I have a bunch of, you know, I, I'm kind of in between all the councils here and certain things. As, like, as, as for me, why did we collect more money for this budget? And where did most of the money come from? And when I look at your report, $820,000 of surplus came. It was overall corporate expenses showed a surplus of $824,95. And it says here that town budgeted 1 million in expenses to offset potential losses from Grimsby Energy, which did not occur. You know, to me, now, when we budget that, that would have been a one-year, like, it wouldn't have been in the base budget. It would have been a one-item ticket. Am I correct on that? So that's, that's a huge component to that, although we did have some other costs there. Another issue that we had was, you know, a large surplus was information systems. But that's because, and maintenance fees and contracted service. To me, that's our staff doing great work. So I guess what I have to ask is, is, you know, a lot of these surpluses that we were seeing is not in our base budget. So it's not a tax base, per se, that's going to be on the taxpayer year after year. Is that correct? Or is it, like, as, as an example, the corporate expenses for the GEI would have been a one-item ticket?
That's right.
So we can't count on, so I guess, right there, so a lot of this surplus is not dependable year after year. So then I ask, in your estimate, how are our reserves?
Our reserves? How are they?
Yeah.
Infrastructure reserves? They're, they're good in water and sewer, but for, say, Public Works roads, they're poor. For facilities, they're very poor. So, yeah, I mean, there's our equipment, it's poor, and equipment replacement. And that all goes back to the infrastructure levy in terms of increasing our reserves for future maintenance and replacement on our assets.
We talk about two reserves being a little bit healthy, regards to, like you said, the water reserve and sewage. Now, my question to that is, can we take that money out and use it somewhere else?
You can, but I would absolutely recommend not.
Right.
There's enough, the money that is in those reserves, they're good, but they're, they're, the balance works towards a plan, to a, to a financial plan. And the monies that are in there reflect a long-term replacement plan for assets. You take that money out, and then, you know, we, we look at a, at a 20-year window of future replacement. Right now, for, for those reserves in particular, we are trying to build that money into those reserves, because we know in 10 years' time, we're going to have a huge amount of these water and sewer assets that are going to need to be replaced. So it might look that the, the money sitting there is big, but there's a reason why it's big, and it will keep growing, those reserves, because we know we're going to get hit in a number of years with replacement. There's a bunch of subdivisions that came online, all at the same time in Grimsby, and all of those water mains and sewer mains are going to need to be replaced, pretty much all at the same time. So we have to make sure that we have the monies available.
Yes, my question again to you is that I thought, I, I heard 20-year asset management plan, but I thought the province mandated that we need to have a 10-year asset management plan, because most, a lot of municipalities out there were not preparing for the future. And when they didn't prepare for the future, and like you said, in 10 years' time, when they had a huge projects, and the municipalities are not allowed to run in a deficit, they would have to go to the province and beg for more money, because they didn't have the money. So my understanding was that was the whole purpose behind the province saying a 10-year asset management plan, which I'm not sure if we've, if ours is complete or not right now, but I know it was being worked on. So that, that's my question. I thought it was a 10-year asset management.
Yeah, but we, we go out further for our assets. And, yeah, just so we're a little more prudent, and we can, we can build these balances up over a larger, longer time scale. And we, we know exactly how much we'll need going further out. Because these assets come due, you know, water and sewer assets, their life, useful life could be, like, in the 70-year range. You know, and a lot of these assets will need to be replaced, and a lot of them, like I said, are coming due in the 10 to 15-year timeframe.
Very happy to see this money go into reserves like this. I think that, you know, unfortunately, maybe not here in our town, but a lot of politicians throughout many jurisdictions are very nearsighted and do not think of what's happening down the road. And I think a contingency plan like this, with the, in it, working in accordance or in line with our asset management plan, is something that we all need to understand a little bit more. And I fully support putting this into reserves, because it's very difficult, as everyone knows, to ask for a lot of money at, in a specific, like you said, 10 years' time. And I'd like to see more about the asset management plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ritchie. Councilor Vane, do you have any questions?
No, just a comment, please, if you don't mind. I just want to say I agree with a lot of comments that were made, but I do have to emphasize I support what Councilor Ritchie just said, is that we can't be short-sighted. It may be an easy thing to appease taxpayers by giving money back, or lowering a tax increase. But the reason I think that we did run into a big tax increase last year is because we did lack a lot of money in reserves. Previous councils used reserve money to keep taxes low, and it put us in a bad position. By us raising the reserves now would only put a future council in trouble, or a few taxpayers, I should say. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Vane. Need a mover and a seconder, seeing no further questions. Moved by Councilor Sharp, second by Councilor Ritchie.
Clear recorded votes?
Yeah. Recorded vote requested by Councilor Vardy. Moved by Councilor Sharp, second by Councilor Ritchie. Resolve that report FIN 20-11 regarding the 2019 general statement of operations be received, and that the 2019 budget surplus of $1,096,754 be allocated to reserves as outlined in the report. Recorded vote, Councilor Bothwell? Councilor Bothwell is a yes. Councilor Dunstall?
Yes.
Councilor Dunstall is a yes. Councilor Frake?
Yes.
Councilor Frake is a yes. Councilor Cadwell?
Yes.
Councilor Cadwell is a yes. Councilor Ritchie?
Yes.
Councilor Ritchie is a yes. Councilor Sharp? Councilor Sharp is a yes. Councilor Vane?
Yes.
Councilor Vane's a yes. Councilor Vardy?
At the risk of seeming like a sermon, no.
Councilor Vardy is no, and myself, I'm a yes. So that is carried. All right. Up next, we have report FIN 20-12, 2019 environmental service statements of operations. Stephen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the first one, the sanitary sewer system, we had a surplus of $374,000 approximately. And the major reason for the surplus was on the revenue side. Higher-than-expected supplemental tax revenues of about $66,000. And on the expense side, sewer flow charges were less than budgeted by, what's it here, $159,000, $160,000. And there was also some savings on main, sewer main maintenance. So that's sanitary sewers. And then on the water system, we had a surplus of $491,000. The main reason for that is on the expense side, where our bulk water purchase, purchases from the region was lower than expected. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Thank you, Stephen. Councilor Bothwell?
Hi, Stephen. Is the sewer maintenance, is that the amount that shows up on people's tax levy bills?
Yeah, that's correct.
So am I correct that last, 2019, the water, the portion of the water bill, which is separate from our tax levy and separate from our tax bills, we receive that quarterly or whatever, or three times a year, went up 6, 6.5%? Is that correct, the water? And the sewer maintenance, which shows up on our tax levy bill, went up 4.5%. Is that correct? So are we able to look at this and say, when we look at those percentage increases for the tax levy, especially for the sewer maintenance portion on our tax bills, that we really take that into account, and we can perhaps reduce our tax bills a bit with that? Thank you.
Absolutely. And a lot of the, what's hap, what happens in the water and the sewer can actually be really unpredictable in the sense that we budget how much sewage flow we think there's going to be, how much sewage our residents are going to use. In other words, how much goes down the drain. And the same thing with, on the water side. We estimate how much water we will need to purchase from the region in our budget. And then, you know, the residents in Grimsby will surprise us, because they're going to cut back on their water. And it also depends whether it was a rainy summer or a dry summer. If it was a rainy summer, people aren't going to use water. So our, our budget, our estimate for how much water we're going to have to purchase from the region is higher than we, we would have expected if it was a rainy summer. This summer was a fairly dry summer, so there'll probably be more water purchases. So it might be closer to what we budgeted. It, it can be very unpredictable, and it, a lot of it will depend on, on residents and their usage of water. And then what comes out of the tap goes down the drain.
So is it, just with the new developments, a lot of them, my development actually has a sprinkler system that my condo board charges me for. So I'm not watering my lawn, I'm paying through my condo fees for that. Just another quick question about capital maintenance and sewer infrastructure with the new developments, such as the one I'm in. We did a performance audit, and we have a reserve fund study and all that stuff. Because are we, are condo boards responsible as part of their operations for the sewer and water lines that are running on condo property through the roads that are in a condo development? Or is that regular maintenance that the town would have to be responsible for?
Generally, a lot of, a lot of times, those properties, it's actually the responsibility of the condo corporation. Even in town here, where we have some areas where we have townhouses, like, say, across the street, actually, it, it's actually a private, private road. And the, it's not the responsibility of the town.
So therefore, the more that we do these private condominium complexes, the more the responsibility shifts to condo boards to provide for that in their reserve funds that they have to put up, which means our monthly fees go up, should something-
Yeah, I would, I would think so, yeah. I'm, I'm just curious, do you see a separate charge? Like, is that all, do you see it broken out on?
So what they do is they're required to do a reserve fund study every five years or something like that, at which time they assess the asset value, I believe. And they would then look at how the, again, like you guys do with aging your infrastructure, and determine what the lifespan would be. And, and based on that, they look at our monthly fees, and they decide, okay, we need to now do a little bit of a bump up, because we're coming close to some of those, those needs. But it's, I think that a lot of new home, new condo buyers and owners, that question comes up a lot, is what are we paying for in our condo fees, and why are we paying for the infrastructure that, shouldn't the town be paying for that? So that just, I just, it's good to have that clarified. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bothwell. Any further questions? Seeing none, I just need a mover and a seconder for this resolution. Moved by Councilor Cadwell, second by Councilor Sharp. Moved by Councilor Cadwell, second by Councilor Sharp. Resolve that report FIN 20-12 regarding the 2019 environmental services statement operations dated July 20th, 2020 be received, and that the 2019 sanitary sewer surplus of $374,444 be transferred to the sanitary sewer reserve, and that the 2019 water system surplus of $491,095 be transferred to the water reserve. All in favor?
Yes.
And that's carried? Up next, we have report FIN, sorry, correspondence from the Niagara region, declaration of public health issue. Any speak on that or not? Any questions? Seeing none, just need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Councilor Frake, second by Councilor Vardy. Moved by Councilor Frake, second by Councilor Vardy. Resolve that the correspondence received from Niagara region with reference to the declaration of public health issue, issues be received for information. All in favor? That's carried. That's carried. Up next, we have correspondence from area municipalities. Need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Councilor Bothwell, second by Councilor Vardy. Moved by Councilor Bothwell, second by Councilor Vardy. Resolve that the correspondence received from area municipalities with joint references to joining the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities and the joint statement to call to action from AMO, LUMCO, and MARCO, Ontario mayors and chairs issue emergency call for financial support be received for information. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
That's carried. All right, up next, we have from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, COVID-19 Economic Recovery Act and Bill 189 COVID-19 Support and Protection Act, 2020 Planning Act. Need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Councilor Ritchie, second by Councilor Sharp. Moved by Councilor Ritchie, second by Councilor Sharp. Resolve that the correspondence received from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing regarding the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Act and Bill 189 COVID-19 Support and Protection Act 2020 Planning Act be received. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
That's carried. All right. Up next, we have where are we? Place to Grow Plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe. Councilor Bothwell, you wanted to speak on that? Well, I'll get a mover and a seconder. I'll have, Councilor Bothwell, you moved, seconder. Councilor Frake?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Due to the, the deferral of this item from the previous agenda, we missed a deadline that the minister had put in his letter for municipalities to respond by July 30th, I believe it was. And a number of municipalities did take this amendment to the growth plan, amendment number one, which is forecasting population and employment densities out to 2051. There's quite a number of changes in it that are critical to how our municipalities grow, where they grow, and where we put our, our density. Unfortunately, as a result of the deferral and the, the short timeline and receipt of this correspondence, we were not able, as council, to review it and perhaps suggest to planning staff that we would like a comment or, or some type of response to the minister. So I'm just hopeful that in future, when we have things that are time-sensitive, that come through, through staff's or the clerk's office, that if there's any way to get those to us and on an agenda, and I know the clerk will do her best to do that, just gives us an opportunity, when there is something that's of significant importance to the, to the municipality, that we have an opportunity to respond. What I would like to ask is that because the region and in a number of their background documents and studies that they're doing for their official plan review, they have undertaken quite a number of discussions with our planning staff with respect to population and densities and the growth plan, and where our new- and densities and the growth plan and where our new numbers are going. And they were waiting for the province to dictate the land needs methodology and a few other little fine-tuning things that have come out, and that's now in this amendment one. So I think what I'd like is an information request to our planning staff to ask them to come back to council with a bit of just information on how the discussions have been going with the region with respect to the growth plan, with respect to the forecasted numbers of population and density and employment numbers that the region is looking at allocating to Grimsby. Other municipalities have had this discussion, and it has been on their agendas where they've given updates as to how those discussions with the region have gone. And it will also help us understand where the focus for intensification is going to be in Grimsby moving forward. And I think that although it's not a final thing right now, it would be very helpful to have an update as to where those discussions are going and where that intensification is and the numbers that they're looking at allocating, because the region is, apparently, that's where the discussion was. It's not a one-way street where they tell us, it's our people are saying this is where we think our numbers can go. Previously, that type of information would also be in our development charges study, and we could go to that and we could see it would, our planning staff actually provide background documents that show, here's our available land supply, here's our available allocations for intensification, here's how many units and people we can put on those pieces. That was part of what happened with the greenfield area that we had, and that's how we also found out that Grimsby has significantly overachieved our intensification targets that the region had set for us through phasing with the previous growth plan numbers. And they had, have confirmed that, that we had to 2031 exceeded, I believe, our targets. Now, the statement at that point was that it was a minimum number, it wasn't the maximum number, and that you can always go over those thresholds. Well, this amendment number one is interesting because the Green Belt Foundation and a few others are saying that they want to make sure that those targets, which they feel are quite high and maybe not realistic in a number of places, should not be minimums or they shouldn't be flexible. Like, if they're going to say it, they need to be realistic. And they don't, I think we need to not put a number there and then say, well, you can go another 100,000 over that, whatever. So, there were, there's a lot of elements in that. It's up for, well, it was up for review till July 30th. Number municipalities did submit. I'm not sure where it's going to go, I'm not sure what that's going to mean for us, but I think it would be very helpful to have planning staff come back and speak to it and provide us with an overview of those discussions and actually try to give us some numbers and some expectations as to what we can, what we can expect to see coming forward in Grimsby. And I know the development charges study is on hold as well, because they were waiting for some of this information, so it'd be interesting to hear when we will continue to pursue that as well. So, thank you, that would be helpful to have, if we can put it in the minutes, to ask staff to come back with that. Does that make sense?
Great. Yeah, I think it does, Counsel Bothwell. Thank you.
Is it too soon to ask for that to come back for the September meeting?
CIO?
Yeah, I think, at a glance, I would think so. We've lost two planners in the last couple of months, so, but we'll try, we'll try really hard to get it for 21st, but let me go back to the team, so.
Yeah, we only have, we're only having one meeting in September, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll read the resolution. Moved by Counsel Bothwell, seconded by Counsel Frake. Resolve that correspondence received from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing with reference to a Place to Grow Growth Plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, More Homes, More Choices, be received, and that the region has been in discussions with municipal planners since the summer of 2019 on the regional growth management plan to support the new ROP, Background Urban Structure, Employment Lands, and Housing Strategy Studies and Needs Assessment, and that these studies inform and feed into draft population and employment allocations, as well as where that population and employment is proposed to be accommodated within the town of Grimsby. And that the region's population in the 2016 census was 447,888, and the proposed amendment one population growth targets for the region in Niagara at the high end shows 700,000 and the low end is 658,000 for 2051. And that the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, in his letter of June 16th, 2020, has requested comments on the proposed amendment one prior to the consultation period, closed date of July 31st, 2020. Therefore, be it resolved that council directs staff to provide an update at the next council meeting, if possible, on potential impacts of the proposed amendment one to a Place to Grow Growth Plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe and any response prepared for the deadline of July 31st by Acting Director of Planning, Building, and Bylaw or the region to it. And that staff provide council with an update at the next council meeting, if possible, on the status of the discussions with the region on draft population and employment allocation forecast, land needs assessment, and the focus areas for growth and intensification for the town of Grimsby. All in favor? That's carried. That's carried. We're just taking a couple of minutes. All right. Now, we're getting to the regularly scheduled council meeting, August 17th. Good evening, Charles.
Hi, Mayor, how are you?
I'm very good, thanks.
Regards to all.
All right, Counsel Vardy, you have a resolution?
Good evening. Very good.
Whereas the Integrity Commissioner reported his findings at the open council meeting of July 20, 2020, whereas the Integrity Commissioner complaint IC 1930320 determined that Counselor Kevin Ritchie breached the Code of Conduct for premeditated actions designed to malign and insult Counselor Reginald Frake, and that Counselor Kevin Ritchie should receive the minimal reprimand. Whereas the Integrity Commissioner believed such a reprimand would have a rehabilitative effect on Counselor Kevin Ritchie and send a message of deterrence of such conduct to all members of council. Whereas the Integrity Commissioner complaint IC 191870320 found Counselor Randy Vane to have breached the Code of Conduct for having shouted an abusive assertion at Counselor Leanne Vardy. Whereas Integrity Commissioner complaints IC 1880320, Vardy versus Cadwell, IC 1890320, Vardy versus Sharp, IC 1900320, Vane versus Bothwell, IC 1930320, Frake versus Ritchie, IC 1960320, Dunstall versus Frake, and IC 2100320, Frake versus Dunstall were dismissed. Whereas the Integrity Commissioner noted that this was a divided council, and as such, this behavior does not best serve the town of Grimsby. Be it resolved that council acknowledge that the Integrity Commissioner recommendations, and by the passing of this motion, Counselor Ritchie be considered formally reprimanded, and be that all of council recommit to working together, using polite discourse, listening and considering the opinions of each other, and treat each other with respect in word and deed.
Counsel Frake? You'll second it? Yeah, we need a copy of the resolution, since it... All right, we have a mover and a seconder, and does anyone want me to read the resolution again? Yes, all right.
Mr. Mayor, could you read it without the each complaint listed? I'm kind of confused, as I understand that Counsel Vardy read each complaint name and who it is against, and the number. If we could have the resolution without all that filler information, I would better appreciate that, if you don't mind. Thank you.
All right, I'll try to piece read it then.
Could you read the, "Therefore, be it resolved"?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I'll start with, whereas the Integrity Commissioner. So moved by Counsel Vardy, seconded by Counsel Frake. Whereas the Integrity Commissioner noted this was a divided council, and as such, this behavior does not best serve the town of Grimsby. Be it resolved that A, council acknowledged that the Integrity Commissioner recommendations, and by the passing of this motion, Counsel Ritchie be considered formally reprimanded, and B, that the, all of council recommit to working together, using polite discourse, listening, and considering the opinions of each other, and treat each other with respect in word and deed. Any discussion? Counsel Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. And to the clerk, my question is, this motion that was not on the agenda, is it, would it replace item eight, A through E? Or will we be still reviewing each of those items?
So, I, at this time, I only had a motion to receive all the reports. Any motions can be voted on, I mean, it can be voted on separately or as a whole motion right now, but I think as, right now, there was a mover and seconder for this full motion, so this motion would be voted on.
Will we still receive those?
Yes, we can still receive them.
We'll still receive them, and there'll still be a chance to discuss them.
Yes, we can discuss right now, as there's a motion on the table.
We're discussing the motion that's on the table, but then later, in item eight?
To motion to receive them all, yeah.
And will they be received individually, or will they be received?
They're all being received together. You can always pull it out for separate reconsideration, uh, separate consideration.
Because there's some that we would like to, I think, that I'd like to speak separately to. There's some that I would receive without really any discussion, and there's others that I would receive with some discussion. So, can we, can we do that? And, I mean, I know we're in a different motion right now.
Yes, we can.
But this, so can we do that after this motion?
Yes, yes. You can also speak to the motions, to the reports that have been brought up through this motion as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Sharp. Counsel Ritchie?
Sorry, the mayor just pointed out a question. And, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought the intent of this motion is to deal with all these issues at the same time, and if this motion's on the floor and we move forward with this motion, then I don't think there'd be an opportunity to speak to each motion independently. Am I correct on that? I do believe we could all make statements to any particular motion at this particular time, but I thought the, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but the intent of the motion was to deal with everything in one shot here.
That's why it addresses...
Every single one, right.
Yes, sorry, this motion does address all the, all, all the reports, so we can pass this motion to discuss all the reports, or council can decide to remove or split the motion to address each of the reports separately.
I just wanted to make sure that Counsel Sharp is aware that this is dealing with them all, so it's not separate right now. Thank you.
Counsel Sharp?
Hi, thanks, Mayor Jordan. Sorry to double dip, but, so, could we defeat, just defeat this motion and then go on to item eight, A through E, and look at them each individually? Because I think it warrants, so this, I didn't have a chance, this was a long motion, and I didn't have a chance to read it, and it wasn't on the agenda, and so, I'm going to vote this down, not because I don't agree with it, but maybe it could have been brought after the items that are on, that we deferred from our last meeting, but personally, I'm going to just defeat this motion. No, sorry, I'm not going to defeat it, I'm going to vote it down. And I would hope that if we defeat it, that we could just look at it in item eight.
Counsel Vane?
I have to support Counsel Sharp on this one. I, well, I respect and appreciate what Counsel Vardy is trying to put forward. I think it is, we really haven't had any time to digest what she said. While I don't disagree with what she's saying, I do think that we have deserved the opportunity to speak, if we should desire to speak to each one, and to...
Thank you, Counsel Vane. Any further discussion? Counsel Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. When we see these reports, I think in the motion, it clearly stated that, and it recognizes that this council is divide. And when I take a... And when I take a look at the motion that's put forward, I take a look and I think that we need to concentrate on working together and moving forward as opposed to reflecting back on what's happened in the past. And, and I think it only hurts this council by bringing up each one of these individual IC reports and going over them. We've all had a great amount of time to, to read them. There's many things that we may agree or disagree with the reports. There may be a lot more questions that, that people may want to ask. Unfortunately, it is what it is. And in order for us to move forward, I think that Counselor Vardy did a good job of putting these together. And I think that instead of dwelling on the past, we need to look and move towards the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Ritchie. Counselor Frake?
I will echo what my colleague Counselor Ritchie just said. I'm very anxious to put this behind me and behind us. I think by visiting each one of these, these integrity complaints and dwelling on them any longer, I think it's just going to probably just create a little more pain for us as we go forward. So I'm willing to put this behind me. I want to work with this council. I want to work with the, with, with getting this town back on track. We, we've, we've come a long way and, and through a lot of painful moments through the, through the last year. And I can say that I've suffered as much or more than anyone. And I look forward to just putting this motion, I will, I will, I will support this motion 100% obviously because I seconded it. And I look forward to just getting it behind us. So hopefully we can do that tonight and not dwell any longer on this. It's, I think we spent enough time on it and we hurt each other enough. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Frake. Any further questions? Counselor Dunstall?
I won't touch the microphone this time. I, I like the motion that Counselor Vardy has presented and I'll be supporting it. What's interesting, and I wanted to say this, and I maybe have wanted to say it for, for some time, is that we all are elected officials who are elected by the residents of Grimsby. And so I'd just like to say, you got what you got because this is what you wanted. You wanted change and yes, we came out somewhat divided. Looks like we're going to try and get back together. There's been a lot of good things that have happened in the last year with this council and I think that if we could work together, we will see a lot of other opportunities for this town to move forward. But we've got to work together and we can't work behind the scenes independently trying to do our own thing. We need to work together as a council and that's what we are. We are a council. We're not individuals. We're a council and we've been trying to work individually too much and we need to work together as a council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dunstall. Yeah, Counselor Bothwell, did you want to speak? No? All right, so a question's been called. I'll read the resolution. And yes, I agree, I'd like to move forward and move past this and start working together as, as the council that we, we're elected on October 22nd, 2018. And I feel we can move forward and accomplish even more better things. Okay. Yep. Recorded vote has been asked for by Counselor Ritchie. Moved by Counselor Vardy, seconded by Counselor Frake. Whereas the Integrity Commissioner IC reported his findings to open council meeting of July 20th, 2020. Whereas the Integrity Commissioner noted that this was a divided council and as such this behavior does not best serve the town of Grimsby. Be it resolved that A reports IC 187-0320, IC 188-0320, IC 189-0320, IC 190-0320, IC 193-0320, IC 196-0320 and IC 201-320 be received and B, council acknowledged the Integrity Commissioner's recommendations and by the passing of this motion Counselor Richard, Ritchie be considered formally reprimanded and C, that all of council recommit to working together using polite discourse, listening and considering the options of each other and treat each other with respect in word and deed. Counselor Bothwell?
Yes.
Counselor Bothwell is a yes. Counselor Dunstall?
Yes.
Counselor Dunstall is a yes. Counselor Frake?
Yes.
Counselor Frake is a yes. Counselor Cadwell?
Yes.
Counselor Cadwell is a yes. Counselor Ritchie?
Yes.
Counselor Ritchie is a yes. Counselor Sharp?
Yes.
Counselor Sharp is a yes. Counselor Vane?
Yes.
Counselor Vane is a yes. Counselor Vardy?
Yes.
Counselor Vardy is a yes. And myself, I'm a yes, so that's passed unanimously. If you have any comments, you're welcome to speak now.
I'm quite content with the direction council moved in, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Up, up next, we have report DPW 2026, request for site alteration permit for 149 Kemp Road West. We're just patching in Brandon Wortman. I guess I'll get you to go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So... ...obtaining council's approval to authorize the Director of Public Works to issue a site alteration agreement to the owner of number 149 Kemp Road West, subject to the owner meeting various conditions of this site alteration bylaw. The owner of this property also owns two food establishments in the Burlington area. The owner has indicated that his intent is to plant crops to help support his business by utilizing ingredients, excuse me, ingredients ingrown on his property, essentially what is called a farm-to-table or a farm-to-fork operation. The owner had previously been issued a site alteration permit in 2018 to import fill with the purpose of improving drainage on his land to better support growing crops. The original permit was valid for 12 months. The owner applied for, for, and received a three-month extension in April of 2019, which ended in July 2019. The owner was able to complete the majority of the work, however, was unable to complete the importation and spreading of the topsoil before the moratorium was established. The owner is now asking for permission to complete the importation of topsoil to complete the site so that he can begin planting in the spring. We have reviewed the proponent's request and feel that is consistent with the conditions in which the town can issue a permit under the site alteration bylaw. The owner has estimated he needs about 500 truckloads or 5,000 cubic meters to finish the site. Given the amount of new material being imported exceeds 1,000 cubic meters, the bylaw requires council approval. I can take any questions at Bernie.
Great, thank you very much, Brandon. Counselor Sharp?
So my question, if Brandon can hear me, is that I just heard him say 500 truckloads and 5,000 cubic meters. Was, was that a misspeak or is that, because the report said 800 cubic meters and that's like the neighborhood of like 50 or 80 truckloads, all right? And so could you just confirm that maybe you meant 500 cubic meters, not 5,000?
Brandon?
So I, I think, I think I caught that. The report talked about 800 cubic meters. That was staff's estimate. We've, oh, sorry, 800 truckloads, I believe. We ended up talking to the resident since we prepared the report. He's identified that our estimate was a little high, so he's thinking it's in the 500 truckloads or 5,000 cubic meters.
Okay, so if, thanks, Brandon. If anyone here, I see that you guys have your computers out. The report says 800 cubic meters. It's 200 less than the 1,000 threshold that requires a public statutory meeting. 5,000, so also, I was sitting back when my chair used to be over there. This gentleman came in here and he asked for an extension. He asked for a one-month extension. And we, and we said, because there was a moratorium, we said that he, that we don't think he can finish in one month. We wanted to be sure that he had enough time to complete the project. He's been, he had already been filling for one year on that property. I don't know how many hundreds of truckloads he may have already brought. And, and he said, you know, I'm trying to farm for my, it's a peach of a time pizza place. And he said, I just want to bring farm-to-table or something. And he said, I need time. He said, I can complete it in one month. I want that extension. And we said, no, we don't think you can complete it in one month. And I have some expertise in those kind of timelines and, and I agreed. And, and we said, no, three months and you have to be done. And, and there was, there was like emphasis on three months and you must be complete. And like, they, they just said, oh yeah, we can do it one month. And, and we weren't sure. And now, of course, he, he didn't complete it and now he wants 5,000 cubic meters more. It's like, that's a year, that's two years worth of work. I mean, which he thought he could do in one month. And I mean, maybe somebody led him down a garden path that is, I don't know, but at this point, I find this report, A, is incorrect. And maybe Brandon is, is not, maybe there was some misspeak there about the 5,000, but the report is, is not correct. One of these accounts is, is not correct. And then the other is, okay, so we're talking topsoil and like, I'm not a scientist or botanist or whatever, but I mean, topsoil, there's, it's like the organic stuff that you take off of the first 12 to 18 inches, right? And like, most developers and, and construction sites push it to the side and save it to reuse it. And then if it's not, they, they sell it because it's valuable. Because the stuff that comes out under the ground, it's clay, it's hard, there's no organic matter in it. It's, worms can't live in it. Worms can live in topsoil. Worms can't live in the stuff that comes out of the two and three-story underground parking. And in order to make that viable for farming, you have to, you have to let the organics come into it. And like, I'm concerned that on the property, I saw, I looked at the drawings, I read these reports and like, so the property is a long strip from Kemp Road up to whatever is behind there. And, and the actual fill area is only the front portion of the property. Most of the property is, is a tree, bush area. So, so it's like a few acres, you're going to put 5,000 cubic meters on it. Maybe one, ask once more for Brandon, is it possible that it's not 5,000 cubic meters?
Brandon?
So, okay, so a couple of questions there. I'm sorry, I was having trouble hearing you. There's a bit of an echo, so if I missed something?
So, sorry to clarify.
So, just to clarify again, our understanding is that we had put in the report was the, the value was the 800, sorry, 8,000 cubic meters. The owner has advised us when we did our estimate that that was too high. He's indicated he just needs to bring in topsoil to finish off the site. What was done previously was importing fill to top up the site to make it a better drainage. That work was largely completed with the exception of topsoil. My understanding is a portion of the topsoil that was there prior to the filling has been put aside, but he now wants to bring in additional topsoil to make sure that the, the site can be finished off and is, is global for him. In terms of the, the actual area of the site alteration, we've indicated in, in the attachment of Pen D K is a map which shows the area of the site alteration limits in relation to the rest of the property. So again, you can see the tree area that Counselor Sharp had referenced is clearly outside of the area that is identified for bringing in the topsoil. The Conservation Authority previously under the previous permit had indicated they were accept, okay with the, the works as being proposed and essentially were recommending, again, this is a continuation or completion of the work that, that was previously done on, under the previous permit to finish off the topsoil.
Okay, so if I'm just going to be explicit with my question, is it 5,000 cubic meters that he's bringing to this site?
Yes, 5,000 cubic meters is 500 truckloads.
And that's how much he plans to bring to this site?
Correct.
Of only topsoil?
Correct.
How much did he bring previously to this site?
I don't have that information.
Okay, so my opinion is, we gave this gentleman a timeline to complete his project. He told us he could complete it in that time. We, we actually offered him more time than he thought he needed to complete it. And now he wants a massive amount of soil to be brought in. And the answer is no. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. Counselor Bothwell?
I'm just speechless. Because I read the report too and it said 800 meters, cubic meters, and, in two places. And just slightly under the 1,000 threshold to go to a public meeting and for council to have to approve it. And we thought, okay, that doesn't sound too bad. That's about, how many trucks? 80? Okay. I was at that planning meeting, same as Counselor Sharp. I was the one who suggested maybe three months as well would be more reasonable. I didn't think one month. And the acting director at that time was conducive to that. Now, we were very clear that that should include grading. And in my mind, the permit includes grading. So our, we had a, have a responsibility at the end of that permit, which was July 31st, 2019, to go in and assess the property and determine if it met the requirements of the permit and the grading was completed to our satisfaction. So my question is, did we do that? That's one of my questions. Because that would be normal practice then. And there's usually retainer, I think we had a bit of a retainer for that permit that we had to hold back just in case there was damages to the road and stuff. So we'd look and we'd finalize the permit and we'd say, yep, did everything he was supposed to do, July 31st, okay, gets his retainer back. So another question I have is, he knew we had a moratorium. He started taking more truckloads in July. June 1st, I think our moratorium was lifted. July, he started importing and it wasn't until he got caught and somebody complained that he stopped. He knew there was a moratorium. He very well should have done his due diligence to check now, what do I need to do if I need to bring more in? He went ahead and waited till he got caught. That's not a good thing to, in my mind. And now he's back, now he's done the, the required paperwork, but as Counselor Sharp said, we have a number of 5,000 cubic meters, which is way out there. That requires council's approval, it requires a public meeting, it requires all the provisions of our new site alteration bylaw. There is no way that I would support any exception to that. And even then, it would be very difficult for me to approve this on the basis of how it's proceeded to this point. I have another question is that the MPCA permit, which was done in 2018, I'm sure has an expiry date as well and had an expectation that those works would have been completed by 2019. And the grading that they would have submitted and the prop, and the same, all the, the information that he would have provided at that time should have been completed. So we're looking at a new application in my mind to MPCA to, it's, it's not a continuation. There's a additional, different type of material, different volumes, substantially different. And MPCA, in my mind, it's not a rubber stamp. I suspect he has, should be going back and, and we should be confirming that he has that continued approval prior to him even coming forward with a new application for, under our new site plan agreement. Counselor Sharp's question about how much did he bring in originally is a very good question. And I think what we need to do is send this back, like, or we're going to defeat it, but I mean, if he wants to continue to pursue it, there's a whole lot more information, the report needs to be corrected. We need to know exactly what the conditions of the other permit were, whether they were fulfilled. we're gonna defeat it, but I mean, if he wants to continue to pursue it, there's a whole lot more information, the report needs to be corrected, um, uh, we need to know exactly what the conditions of the other permit were, whether they were fulfilled, uh, what the volume was that was brought in at that time, and uh, we just need to take into account that he continued to take in fill, even though knowing that um, uh, our moratorium had just ended and did not come and request a permit, and just started to do work without it, so um, I'm, I'm not happy about, um, that's a big, a big difference in the report, from eight hundred cubic meters to five thousand cubic meters, um, so this is just not something I'm even willing to entertain at this point, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Bothwell. Any further questions? Councillor Cadwell?
Yes, uh, thank you Mayor Jordan, and uh, thank you for the report, Brandon, and I just uh, by there many times, I was by there today, and I uh, pa- since he completed it, supposedly it was at July of twenty nineteen, I keep thinking, I was, as I was driving by a number of times, I'm thinking, I wonder when he's gonna start to plant, you know, because that's what he said he was gonna do, and now, now that, that he's uh, applied for a astronomical number of uh, of topsoil, and uh, Councillor Sharp referenced it very well, uh, having a few years in construction myself, the, the, I don't know where you would find that amount of good topsoil, good dressing soil, to finish that off, so uh, something that really, that really, I, I think I'd like to see if we could add this into our bylaw, uh, had a good chat with, with uh, somebody up on the mountain there, and when these, when these uh, bona fide farmers, or farmers, that's all fine too, do they not have, can they not present a agricultural business plan to the town, to say, what, you know, what, what their intentions are, and, and, and also that the, the plan would have to be approved by uh, by a MAFRA, you know, maybe down in Vineland, they have to get some, I don't know, I think we should take it even a few steps more, I know it, it's a good bylaw, I, I like it, it's strong, staff's done a great job, but I've just, uh, this was brought to my attention, I thought, you know what, that's uh, that, that would help us a lot, and the other thing too, Wolverton, sorry, Kemp Road, uh, West, was just tar and chipped about, I think it was back in June, from Wolverton to Allen Road, which is not to the one forty-nine, uh, Kemp Road West yet, but I thought, you know, here we are, all these trucks that there, this gentleman's planning to, to have go up Kemp Road again, and we haven't, we still have to finish the, the uh, Kemp Road from Allen to, I'm gonna, whether we go right to Mountain, I don't know, but uh, it, enough is enough, uh, this, the road has been destroyed, the residents have had to put up with so much hardships in the last, last two, well, two years at least, maybe longer if I can recollect properly, but uh, yeah, I won't be supporting this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Cadwell. Any further questions? Brandon, do you have any more comments?
No, I, I disagree with the previous councillors, so I won't be supporting either.
Alright, and, thanks Brandon, or Councillor Vane, sorry.
Yeah, the only comment I'd like to make is that I, I, I think there's a discrepancy in the, the, the amount of material that we're talking about, and that may be a mistake on my part, so, what I would like to do is take that back, uh, myself, to, to look at the, the numbers again, and what the applicant has submitted, and what I've calculated here, because, uh, again, that, that five thousand, I, I think it, it should be five hundred cubic meters and not five thousand cubic meters, and that may be a mistake on my part, so, if council will allow me, I will, uh, take that back and look at that and make sure that uh, I have the numbers correct before we make a decision either way on that.
So, so refer, you're, what you're asking, Brandon, is to refer it back to you, for clarification?
Correct.
Councillor Ritchie?
I'll put a motion to refer it back to staff.
Alright, and Councillor Vardy?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Sure.
Thank you, um, even if there has been a mistake in, in the report in terms of the number, this resident has brought in fill, was caught July thirty first, uh, knew full well, needed a permit, um, and just went ahead and did it, so whether it's five hundred or five thousand, uh, I'm not getting the sense that, that this person is operating in good faith, uh, my question is, was this person fined for bringing in fill without a permit? If not, they should have been, um, because it, it, it's not a case of didn't know better, um, and again, uh, before we do anything, we need to see if the conditions of the first permit were met, you know, the town, the town made an exception for this person, uh, it, it, it went out on a limb, gave him three months, and, and this happens, and uh, and to date, the actions have been, uh, inappropriate, as we've seen at the end of July, so, uh, whether the numbers are right or wrong, I think there's an issue with, uh, this fill location that needs to be investigated, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Vardy, Councillor Ritchie?
Thank you through, through you, Mr. Mayor, um, I can understand a lot of people's thoughts, but I think that, uh, from my perspective, in order to make the right decision, we need the right information, and that's why I'd like to put a motion to refer it back to staff, so that when it comes back, we have the right decision, whether it's, uh, whether councillors keep the same opinion they have here right now, I do think it's important that we have the right information to make a decision, so I'd like a motion to refer it back to staff.
Thank you, that's due noted, uh, we have the motion here, we just need a secondar. Councillor Vardy? And uh, it's, I, I, I would assume it's a very easy calculation to the square footage or acreage of the field times the number of inches of topsoil he wants, so we can find out exactly how many loads. Absolutely. Alright, moved by Councillor Ritchie, seconded by Councillor Vardy, resolve that report DPW twenty dash twenty-six dated August seventeenth, twenty twenty, be referred back to staff, and further information, for further information and clarification, all in favor?
Yes.
And that's carried? Up next, we have PLN Award of Contract Consulting Services to Complete a Land Use Planning Study, well, I'm sorry, by the way, thank you Brandon. Report PLN twenty dash sixteen, Award of Contract, PLN G twenty sixteen, Consulting Services to Complete a Land Use Planning Study of the Grimsby Beach area. Hey, um, CAO Schlang is gonna speak on that?
Through you, Mayor, to council, um, yeah, we, this is an award, um, contract to the preferred supplier, we're a little less than what we anticipated, back, we thought it was two hundred and thirty thousand, but we're about one sixty-one thousand, as we said in the financial impacts, because we've budgeted it for twenty twenty, it'll go into a planning reserve, and then, uh, the balance will be paid out in twenty twenty-one, so it won't have any impact on the levy for next year, we're also applying for some grant money that, um, our new planning director, um, was looking at, and we're trying to get as much as a hundred thousand dollars to maybe offset that, but uh, right now, we do have to make the decision at the one sixty-one to the awarded supplier.
Thank you, CAO Schlang, uh, questions?
Mr. Mayor, any comment?
Yes, Councillor Vane?
I just wanted to, uh, go, or, and maybe, um, I don't know, CAO Schlang could elaborate just a little bit, I, I've had a few, um, communications from residents, uh, stating they, uh, they don't understand, more than anything else, why we're spending this money, while we as a council all appreciate the importance of Grimsby Beach and of the study, uh, a number of people have challenged it, saying in this particular time of the pandemic and all, it doesn't seem, uh, correct that we should be spending this money, maybe, um, for the benefit of those people, CAO Schlang could maybe elaborate just a little bit as to why this study is so important to the town, thank you.
Yeah, as council is aware, there's an management control bylaw, and one of the requirements of that bylaw is we conduct this study, it was advised by us that it would have to be much more comprehensive than they originally thought, this is an important historic neighborhood in our community, and it's absolutely necessary that we conduct this study in this area.
Councillor Ri- Councillor Ritchie?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, um, so this is, uh, Grimsby Beach is in the ward that, uh, Councillor Frack and I represent, and uh, you know, one of the things, themes that you constantly hear in the town of Grimsby is protecting its heritage, uh, well, this place here is definitely worth protecting, and uh, I'm glad to see that the cost has come down a little bit, but like I stated at the last meeting, um, this is something of great importance to the town of Grimsby, that uh, I will be supporting, even if it was at the other figure, I would have been supporting it, I, I'm glad to hear the potential for, for possibility of, of some grant money, um, let's do our best to get it, but even if that's not there, I do think that this is a, a great importance to our town, um, and a, and a vital component in protecting our heritage.
Thank you, Councillor Ritchie, uh, Councillor Frack?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to echo, um, my fellow councillors' remarks, Grimsby Beach is Grimsby, I mean, it is the original Grimsby pretty much, so how can we not think it's important, I mean, it's, it's, it's evolved in a very unusual way, there's, there's a huge amount of, uh, not only heritage land and property down there, but heritage trees, and there's a whole, there's a whole host of things, it's a very complicated part of Grimsby, actually, and uh, I was down there last week with, with our new director of, of planning and bylaw, and uh, and she met some of the residents down there and got an idea of how complicated it really is, and how much work we need to do, and how far back we have to go to, to, we have to go back probably a hundred years in some of the, some of the research, so, uh, that's probably why some of the costs, and count, and, and, um, CAO Schlang can probably verify that, some of the costs might be, uh, as a result of the fact we have to go back so far in research, it's not like some of the modern, more up-to-date buildings and, and property in, in areas of Grimsby, so, I'm definitely gonna support this, I think it's great that we got it down to a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, it's unfortunate we didn't, weren't able to get it for the hundred grand we thought it would be, uh, but anyways, certainly we'll, we'll be supporting it and look forward to it going forward, so, and hopefully that'll be soon, because everybody is getting quite anxious to see it go ahead, anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Frack, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, uh, if it's okay, I'd have, uh, the two Ward One councillors be mover and secondar on that, if it's okay with them? Alright, Councillor Ritchie has asked for a recorded vote. Moved by Councillor Frack, seconded by Councillor Ritchie, uh, resolve that report PLN twenty sixteen dated August twelfth, twenty twenty regarding the Award of Contract twenty twenty dash PLN N zero, Consulting Services to Complete a Land Use Planning Study of the Grimsby Beach Area be received, and that the Director of Planning, Building and Bylaw be authorized to award the contract to MHBC Planning Limited in the total tendered amount of a hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and fourteen cents, excluding HST. Uh, Councillor Bothwell?
Yes.
Councillor Bothwell is a yes, Councillor Dunstall?
Yes.
Councillor Dunstall is a yes, Councillor Frack?
Yes.
Councillor Frack is a yes, Councillor Cadwell?
Yes.
Councillor Cadwell is a yes, Councillor Ritchie?
Yes.
Councillor Ritchie is a yes, Councillor Sharp?
Yes.
Councillor Sharp is a yes, Councillor Vane?
Yes.
Councillor Vane is a yes, Councillor Vardy?
Yes.
Councillor Vardy is a yes, and myself is a yes, so that's carried unanimously. Good work, council. Up next, we have Report TC twenty dash zero-three, Bylaw to Prohibit and Regulate Discharge of Firearms, uh, is there a motion to defer that, or are you gonna?
I'll speak to it.
Alright, um, Ms. Kim is gonna speak on that, thank you, Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so in response to some community feedback, uh, we did a review of the current, um, bylaw, which was last done in the seventies, uh, this is to address some of the gaps in the provisions to prohibit and, uh, regulate the discharge of our firearms, uh, currently in the town, uh, it didn't include, uh, crossbows and, or certain types of weapons, so we tried to include that, at this, uh, at this time, we tried to align it as much as possible to the nineteen seventy bylaw, nineteen seventy-six bylaw, and if you have any questions, I'll take any questions, thanks.
Questions, Councillor Cadwell?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah, oh, you be noted.
Yeah, thank you, uh, through Mayor Jordan, Sarah, uh, interesting, when I was reading the report, and near the back pages, I looked at the signature, and it was, uh, Mayor, I know Mayor Jordan, who, former Mayor Harold Costello, that is a long time ago, and, uh, Mr. Ron Braichur is the, is the town, town, uh, town manager back then, um, yeah, what I'm, I'm just curious to, uh, Sarah, do we need to have public input, uh, to, uh, you know, to the, any, any changes, obviously nineteen seventy-six, wow, that's, 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 you know, eons ago, but, uh, is it a, would it be good to do, uh, before we move forward with this, getting public input, I know, I remember the, our first, the first term of council, two thousand six, two thousand ten, we had the Ministry of, uh, oh, uh, the, uh, game wardens and that, sorry, uh, because we had some discussion back then, and I remember the chambers were filled, the old chambers back then, with the, uh, residents about, uh, about the gun, you know, the bylaw and that, so, I, that's my question, do we need to, uh, incorporate the, uh, public input at all, before we move forward? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, so at this time, we try to align it as closely as possible to the nineteen seventy-six bylaw, to encompass, to kind of modernize those wording, so if you, uh, if council chooses to, uh, uh, have, add additional components, such as I know the mayor mentioned hunting, right, then a public component can be included, and the bylaw can be amended later on to include the, uh, that component after a public, uh, input session, yes? So we, right now, we're trying to cover the crossbows and every, uh, things that are coming immediately, but, um, we can always amend the bylaw to incorporate any other components to it.
Thank you, Councillor Cadwell, Councillor Vane?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, I, um, I have a intimate knowledge of this, uh, type of weapon as we deal with this, that my, uh, full-time position, but my, uh, comment or question is, um, first of all, in regards to the bylaw itself, there's a comment, or there's a note that firearms, including air pistols, that type of thing, uh, firearms are very specific, and air rifles and pistols, uh, if they meet a certain feet per second range, they're considered a firearm, I want to make sure that this, uh, that this bylaw covers all pellet guns and types of things, because under the, I believe it's four fifty, if it's less than four hundred and fifty feet per second, it's not considered a firearm, and I want to make sure that all pellet guns and air rifles are included in this, so I would like to add a clause in there beside firearms, and where it says air rifle, or air, um, air weapons, um, or, um, spring action, that, that covers all velocities, I would also like to suggest that we add an additional clause, that this, uh, bylaw also covers the use of any prohibited or restricted weapons, um, within the town of Grimsby, because there are certain items that people can still use that are just equally as dangerous, uh, I'll throw something out like throwing stars, for example, uh, or throwing knives, that type of thing, um, I just think the bylaw needs to be a little bit more broadly, because my understanding is this originated from a situation where a, um, an air rifle was being used, and then when the person was asked to stop, we brought in a crossbow, so, let's cover all our bases now, is my suggestion, so I just, especially the fire, the part I'd like to see all velocity for air rifles put in that, and prohibited and restricted weapons banned as well, use of.
Thank you, Councillor Vane. Up ne- up next, we have Councillor Bothwell, then Councillor Sharp, Councillor Bothwell?
Thank you, I think, uh, Councillor Cadwell and Councillor Vane have brought up some, uh, good suggestions to bring this back forward, um, I understand the urgent-
suggestions to bring this back forward. I understand the urgency just to get this passed at this time, but I think if the, if the clerk can ensure that it gets put on the bring-forward agenda for a bylaw review, and that we do have that in the, we have a list of items that are currently to be brought back forward. So if we can put that somehow in the timetable to get that in the next few months back to support Counselor Cadwell's motion, and then we can also have the public meeting and, and work on that framework, so that we can have further public engagement on how it should be better refined. I just don't want it to slip, like you said. So if we get it in the bring-forward items, then we can monitor it to see when it comes back on the agenda's table. The only other thing that I don't know if at this point you want to include it, but I think you'll need to add an exception for the DND lands, where they shoot a lot of guns off all the time, and other big fancy weapons on weekends in the summer and fall. And there's nothing there that gives an exception to the DND lands that are down by us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp, then Counselor Vardy?
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. So I'm not fully opposed to this, but I'm not in favor of this bylaw as it's written. So for one of the things, for example, is it prohibits slingshots, right? And I mean, I live in a neighborhood, it's a little bigger, but it's not that big. You wouldn't want to be firing slingshots around your neighbor's houses. But there's people that live on the escarpment, and half of my ward is up on the escarpment. And you might live on 13 acres, or five acres, or two and a half acres, right? And a slingshot, or an air rifle, or a pellet gun, I mean, you can shoot a pellet gun, right? And kids, I have boys. I have almost four and two-year-old boy. And like, I mean, I'm going to encourage them to do things like get outside. And, you know, I personally would like to live on the Grimsby Mountain in a 13-acre piece of property, and be able to shoot a pellet gun. And that's things that you can do. And we have this small-town character, and we have this, there's, there's a certain, so it seems like this is too restrictive. And so, for example, an air rifle, like these, they're called airsoft, right? They shoot those white pellets. They look like real guns, except they're not allowed to be painted black, and they have the orange thing on the end. But like, these, people collect these, people like, they're, it's like, it's a better hobby than owning restricted weapons, maybe, for example. Because some of these people might, instead of having their hobby with the little white pellet gun, decide to buy an AR-15, right, and get their restricted license, which is allowed. And then they can go up to Silverdale, or the Hamilton, or Stony Creek Gun Clubs, and where you can shoot those. And like, this is a thing that it's allowed. So when we go to prohibit slingshots, and pellet guns, and, and airsoft rifles, I have an airsoft at my house. It's, it doesn't work. You got to put a new cartridge in it. It's a handgun. It looks like it's a real gun, except it's like a white, clear plastic color. My kids love it. They're like, oh, yeah, Dad, right? Can you load it again for me? Because it's too hard to load. And then they go pow, pow, pow. They call it a pewer, right? Pew. And so I think that this, I think this bylaw maybe needs to be, we need to consult with the community. And so I'm not going to support it. I may support it in the future with some changes, but I'm not going to support just creating the bylaw, knowing that we need to change it. And I don't support parts of this. And so maybe if someone wants to move to, to defer this, and we can deal with it later after some public consultation, I think that might be better. I don't know if anyone would, would be willing to do that.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. We'll continue through the speakers and see where we end up at. The clerk has modified the bylaw to encompass the potential for changes down the way. So Counselor Vardy, you wanted to speak on?
Thank you. I think we have to find the balance between knowing that part of our community is a rural community, where, you know, we have to get rid of some pests, and that might, the only way to do it is with a gun, and sort of balancing some of that against public safety. Coming from Ottawa, you mentioned those, what do you call it? Crossbows? That sends a shiver down the, down the backs of anyone who's, who's ever lived in Ottawa. So I really think we need to do some public consultation on this bylaw, and, and work to getting something that, you know, I take Counselor Sharp's point about airsoft guns. My son had an airsoft gun. You get them with biodegradable pellets now. So, I mean, I think we have to find an appropriate balance. And I really think that we have, as Counselor Cadwell said, have to engage the, the community on this. Thank you.
Counselor Ritchie. Thank you, Counselor Vardy.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple points. I do not believe, Counselor Bothwell made a comment about the DND area, and my, my belief would be that would be federal land. And when it's federal land, they have their own laws, which would supersede any bylaw that we made, just like an airport would. So I don't think it would even come into play in regards to the DND. I would like to see something incorporated into this bylaw in regards to hunting, if followed through the proper regulations of the Ontario Game and Fishing Corporation, or the Ministry through the Province of Ontario. However, how this, this bylaw sits right now, I mean, I want to point out, 2.3 in the bylaw says firearms, which means any weapon from which any shot, bullet, or missile can be discharged, and that is capable of causing bodily injury or death to any person. It includes, but is not limited to, a slingshot airgun, paintball gun, and spring gun. And when I look at this bylaw, I think that the utmost importance is safety to our residents. And this bylaw hasn't been revamped since 1976. So obviously, something's come into play where the possibility of safety to a resident has occurred. And I think that we need to take action with this now, with looking at it possibly of revamping it in the future. But we do need to make sure that our residents are safe. And I'll be supporting this how it is right now, unless we can look at amendment to include hunting with that. And other than that, that's where I, I think we have a responsibility to our citizens to act. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ritchie. Any further questions? First round? Counselor Sharp, you'd All right. We have Counselor Sharp as a mover, and Counselor Vardy as a seconder to defer this.
May I ask for a recorded vote, please?
Yeah.